Good mor- good morning. Welcome to Brookings County Commission Meeting, Tuesday, July fifteenth, 2025. We'll start the meeting. Would you please stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is approval of agenda. Do I have a motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. Any additions, corrections, or comments? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item number four on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We do have one citizen, John Mills. Come aboard.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission.
Good morning.
Morning, John.
It's good to be in front of you again this morning. I was here two weeks ago for a rezoning request at Lake Goldsmith. And I think it was obvious that day that there are challenges with the zoning designation, that natural resource zoning designation that exists around Goldsmith and a few other places. Because a number of the neighbors as was identified that day are not in compliance with that zoning and haven't been. And so, as I thought about it since then, I thought, well, we've identified the problem, the commission did, that meeting did. And I don't know what the solution is, but I hope that that is on your future plans to look for a solution to that situation. I have nothing against what my neighbors are doing out there. I think that's only natural. If you own land on a lake, you're going to want to have access to that lake for recreation. And that's what they're doing. And so I have nothing against them. There was, that was never my intention to, to bring any charge or anything against them. But rather to say, I'd like to do that too. And I did it in a, came forward ahead of time rather than looking for forgiveness later. So, the only thing I would say today is that I know as you think of this problem, or look at this problem, you're going to be looking for solutions. And I thought, well, if I'm going to come, I ought to at least come with one solution. And so I've got one here. I'll just leave it with Stacy. Enough copies for all the commissioners and a couple extra for staff. And you got, maybe that starts a conversation. So I hope that you'll not forget about this and try to fix it. Because I think there's an opportunity there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, John, for bringing that.
Move on to item number five, consent agenda items, which includes amendments, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and human services report. Do I have a motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Hearing done. Call roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
But.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six is routine business. Is, item A is approval of the claims. Do I have a motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any comments, questions? Hearing done. Call roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is department head reports. I guess we'll start with the weed and pest department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And we have had some... We had had some questions arise about mosquitoes fogging. It says spraying, but it's supposed to be fogging. In the past several, or in the, excuse me, we've had, we've been spraying mosquitoes for several summers. The cost has been a hundred dollars for an association. That would, just to explain to everybody, that would be like River Ridge is a hundred dollars or a large acreage, and fifty dollars for a regular acreage. What we do is we'd come in, we'd fog that area where we can drive with the mosquito fogger and drive out. And also when we're doing that, we want a wind that's going to take the mosquito fog into the vegetation. Because that's where our mosquitoes are hiding. And we generally do this in the evening, nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, till about two in the morning. With the wetter summers we're experiencing, we've received several calls for mosquitoes, several. In the handout I gave you, I'm going to switch gears here. In the handout I gave you is Carrington County, Clark County, what they charge, when they, when they fog. Yankton County, Brown County, and Minnehaha County is the only county I did, I called that does not have a mosquito program. I don't know if you've had a minute to look at that. My question to you commissioners is, would we like to formalize a pricing with a resolution? I do have that, like that is in your packets. I'm not sure what page, Stacy. If there is. But I put something together. It's a start. I didn't realize Yankton County was first. So my question is, is, does Brookings County Weed and Pest Department, or Brookings County Commission, want the Weed and Pest Department to continue fogging for mosquitoes? Right now, we have about eight associations that ask, request us to fog every year, one to two times a year. And then we have, excuse me, I mean four, and then eight acreage owners for the last two, three years. It's been the same individuals giving us a call.
And this has been done in the past, you're doing these associations. So we're asking to make this official?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we need to boost up the charge, we could do that. But I'd like to keep this charge for this season if we continue, and then next season raise the price.
Well, I think if, if we, it's a great service that we provide to the county. If they call, if residents or associations call, and we can provide it. I don't think it's something, if, you know, the price should be cover materials and, and time. Kind of like other things that we've done where, it's not something that we need to make money on, but we need to cover our expenses.
Correct.
So if we can figure out what that's going to be, I think that's what the, the, the pricing should be for that. But I think it's a, it is a good, it is a good service that we provide to the county, county residents, associations, and things like that. I would agree with that, Sean. Why, what's the reasoning for needing to go and make this official? It's a service that we just provide.
It is a service we provide. The question had come up, do, we, we need to charge to fog everybody. There, the question come up because there was one individual that was requesting to be fogged for free. And we can't do that. So we need to have something set in stone where there's, this issue does not come up anymore.
I'll, I'll try to speak. I've got a bug of my own here, but I guess the problem that I had seen with it is, this isn't a service that we can try to equitably provide for the entire county.
Exactly.
And meanwhile, we're also, I mean, we just don't have the staff or equipment to do it for everyone. If we, if we do a low price, let's just cost in materials, then, you know, we don't, there'll be enough people coming out of the woodwork. We'll have to do everywhere. And on the other hand, we don't want to be undercutting private business. There's people out here that are providing this service in the county and other places. And it's not government's job to provide this service if we're not going to provide it for the whole county. So I don't know how we can cherry pick a few areas here or there that happen to know about it, called in and asked, and, you know, provide that service for them. Somebody else doesn't even know about it and has to pay, you know, whatever the actual going rate is from private business. And now we're, we're competing with private business and undercutting them. I guess those were kind of my issues. You also had all these cities, you know, the actual municipalities that spray. You know, you're, you're talking about taxpayers that are funding somebody else's service that they don't need. Because they're already paying taxes through their city or whatever that are providing this service by hiring somebody else or having their own municipalities doing it. It's just very difficult to provide a equitable plan that covers the county and doesn't undercut private business. So those, those were my questions, why I thought it needed to be brought to the full commission. I just, I, I don't know how we provide this. We're not called as a county to provide this service. Yeah, it might be nice, but undercutting private business and not being able to provide equitable across the, the whole county service. I just, I don't know how that works. We need to take a, a deeper dive into how it works and what we're doing.
Well, I get what you're saying, Doug. But the city does fogging in the city within that. I don't know. Do you know of any businesses that do fogging? I'm not aware of, I mean, there are lawn companies that will spray or whatnot, but I think this is a different service.
Oh, yeah, there's...
But when the city does it throughout the city as a service to the residents, you know, it's a safety concern, West Nile, whatnot. That's the big thing that comes up with me of, you know, seems like we should make that available.
So are we going to spray the whole county then?
No.
I mean, when, when do we stop and when do we start? Those are the questions we need to figure out.
And that, that's, that's a good, good point.
And why do we want to undercut private business that we want to provide this service? If we're doing it at cost and they need to make a profit, that's not government's job to...
I get it. But I, I get what you're saying and agree with that. But is there somebody that's doing that? Or if we're undercutting somebody, if there's somebody out there offering that service, then I don't want to do that. But if there's nobody doing that...
I'm not aware of anybody in the county that's, that's out, you know, most landscaping outfits are so busy right now, they, they can't get to the tasks that they have in front of them. I, I agree with the statement about, you know, West Nile, when, when the machine came to Brookings County, how many years ago?
Twenty-five plus.
So the, the county has the piece of equipment. There's really not a whole lot to maintain on that piece of equipment, I don't believe. Or is there? But, I mean, it's twenty-five years old.
We're going to have to replace in the next few years, I'm assuming. That was coming up later.
I, I think the fee structure is a little light. I, I think that, you know, if we're paying employees overtime, we're, we're not covering our costs on that. I could be wrong, but no, I, I think that our pay structure needs to increase. So we, the county can just cover their costs on, on overtime. Because if it's going to be done at night, it's probably going to be done on overtime.
So to answer your question there, Kelly, is when they do fog mosquitoes, it's generally one guy. If he's out for three hours, he'll work the rest of the week and then just leave early on a Friday instead of getting paid overtime.
Good.
So that's kind of how we do it. Now, push come to shove, and we're so busy and that can't happen, then yes, it would be overtime, possibly. That's, they, they request that, if they could just leave early on a Friday.
How many requests do you have right now to go spray?
For fogging? Six.
Six. We can't take any formal action on your resolution.
Yes.
I understand. We've done this before. I think we should continue with what we've been doing. And then for this year, I mean, right now is the prime time that they want this done. And then look at what we have, these examples from other counties, and do a more formal deal for your pricing. I think you might even be using some chemicals from the past.
Yes.
There might be a new price on that, those chemicals. Get more information put together and establish a resolution, whatever. And we, in Doug's concerns, we can look into that a little bit or two. But as of right now, I know the ones that have called and requested, I probably should do them. I do know some of the small communities do go out to small acreages around, say, White, Aurora, Bushnell. They all have foggers and they kind of do that for people of, you know, around those communities. But there's a few that Misty does that I'm sure are not close to municipality and get done, so, so...
If I could just answer Doug's question. Doug, you were asking, where do you start? Where do you begin? We asked that years ago. And I said the same thing. And that's where the charge come in to play. And then we do not have the manpower to fog fifty people in a week, so to speak. And this is just an example. That, that's the other thing. So I just wanted to let you know, we have looked into that. And getting a plane is way, way too expensive to fog for mosquitoes. The other thing I want you to keep in mind, there is briquettes. There are thirty, fifty, ninety-day briquettes that you can put in standing bodies of water on the county roads. We are doing that. And they last for thirty, fifty, or ninety days. They're a little bit expensive, but it'll control the larvae from turning into adults. So that's, and I, that's something we do also.
Can I make a comment?
Good information that you brought here, Misty. Thank you for that. It's good to see that other counties are doing this. And obviously, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here, but if they're, they're providing that, I think it's a good service to provide. Especially now with the safety issues of West Nile and things that are going on. That's some real stuff, so.
Just, so...
My only comment would be, the chemical that we do have was received through grant dollars
Correct.
back in twenty nineteen.
Twenty twenty.
Oh, twenty twenty.
Yeah, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. You're correct.
The, the, the machine is twenty-five years old.
Yeah.
So whatever the commission decides, if you decide that this is something that we need to do going forward, there is, there isn't a grant any longer that Misty can apply for. At some point, this chemical runs out. At some point, the machine needs to be replaced. If the county is going to be in the business of fogging for mosquitoes, your decision, just know, there are going to be costs associated with that. Right now, we're working off of a machine and some, and, and chemical that we receive through a grant, that at some point is going to have, end its useful life as well, right? So we're going to need to purchase more chemical. We're going to need to probably, you know, update that fogging machine. So that may impact the price as well that we charge for this service. But just keep that in mind as well.
Yep. And I think at that time, then it's, we reconsider what we're doing there.
Sorry. Just to let you know, I did get a quote, quote on a mosquito fogging machine. I do not have it on paper, but it's about thirteen thousand dollars for a machine that we'd use when we have mosquitoes.
And the operator has to be certified with insecticide?
Yes.
Correct.
All of our, all of our operators in the weed and pest department are certified to fog for mosquitoes, including myself. Is there any other?
Do you also, do we have any county properties that you typically fog?
Um, nothing, no county fog, no county properties that we typically, typically fog. I haven't been asked. Is there certain properties that you would like?
No, I, I'm just asking if we, if the equipment serves purposes that we need to have that on hand already in order to spray the outdoor adventure center. I didn't, I didn't know if we had any properties that we normally sprayed of our own, so we had to have the equipment anyway, or we're just own this to provide a service to a few?
In years past, my predecessor, the one before that, would spray, I've got a whole sheet of names, and about twenty people that would just get fogged. So. Just, just letting you know. But otherwise, no, no county properties.
Because the vehicle used is one of your weed department pickups.
Correct.
It's just the unit slides in the back of the pickup.
Yes, it's on a pallet. It just slides in and out. If we need to use the pickup for something else to take garbage out to the landfill or anything like that, it's available. We can just take it out with the forklift and set it down and use the pickup for something else.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Richard, do you have any?
Yes, Bob was out to the NAOC convention in Philadelphia. He'll be back on Thursday. We were called out on Wednesday, July ninth, to the accident west of Volga. Thank goodness there were no fatalities. It was a non-reportable incident. So came back to town. Those are the ones we like to, like to go to. So, otherwise, outside of that, I'm just working on the next month's agenda items and status quo, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thanks, Richard. Lori with finance? Okay, Marty?
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Sheriff.
Just a quick overview with detention center. Present time, we have sixty inmates. We have twenty from the US Marshal Service. And, and twenty-four of those sixty are from Brookings County inmates. We've been busy with accidents and also traffic complaints with, with detours. And we're still having complaints north of town and Elkton. And now we had a complaint with twenty-eight being, or not twenty-eight, but the road in Volga, Samara and stuff. So, so we handle those the best we can. Also, we're, we're keeping Dan busy with DUIs and, and traffic. We had a good Fourth of July. We hardly had any fireworks complaints. Yeah, we had a good Fourth. We have a busy weekend coming up with Pioneer Weekend, and then we have a street dance in Elkton too, so. And then I just want to tell Dan that he just got a conviction on a drug dealer for fifteen years, so. We're not going to let him know that we, Dan means business. Anyway. So other than that, and, and then also, I gave you a, a chain of command from my office, just for your own, own records, how, how the chain of command and, and the different areas and stuff. So you can look that over if you have any questions next time or whatever. So, do you have any, anything else? I'll make, Brian said I had to be short, so I'm cutting it short.
This is a good visual on this chart. I appreciate you doing that. That's, that's good to see.
Appreciate that.
Overall.
Okay, yep. So.
Okay.
Nothing else?
Any other questions? Thanks, Marty.
Thanks, Sheriff. Thank you, Marty.
Brian from the highway?
I'm going to get Waylon up here real quick to talk about Volga before I talk on my report.
Can I hand out maps, Stacy?
Waylon, just a big thanks for coming in today. I know you're a busy guy and we appreciate you coming here. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, Kelly. Thanks for having me. So Waylon Blazias with Banner Associates. The reason that I'm here this morning with Brian is the county, in a joint effort with the city of Volga, recently bid out and awarded a project in Volga for a Samara Avenue reconstruction project. The awarded contractor, Bo's Construction, is, is finding some delay in receiving prefabricated junction boxes, prefabricated storm sewer boxes, to be able to start the project with the phase in which the, in which the plans and specifications prescribe the project should start as. And so on the three sheets that I handed out to you, the first sheet, you'll, you'll note, there's a, a phase one. So first to note, north is to the right on this sheet. Phase one is in the center of the project there from Third Street to Fifth Street in Volga. Phase two, from just north of Fifth, or sorry, just south of Fifth Street to Seventh Street. And then phase three, from just north of Third Street up to the railroad tracks. And the purpose of phasing the project in this way was twofold. One, was to try to limit the amount of time that a certain area and, and residents would be impacted by the construction, particularly with some of those locations not having other access outside of, off of Samara Avenue. Secondarily, phase one is located in the center of the project because it is the bottom of the watershed, so to speak. So the discharge location for any stormwater improvements on the project would discharge to the west, to the creek that's, that's west of the city property there. And so we, we try to start a project on the downstream end, so that way you build upstream. And if you have precipitation during the project, or you need to, to de-water in regards to groundwater and that sort of stuff, you always have the facilities that it is intended to flow through in place prior to moving up the stream. Bo's Construction provided a letter of request to begin the project in phase two, in lieu of phase one, in order to avoid what they had offered as approximately four-week delay in receiving the precast junction box structures. In, in phase one, there are multiple precast junction box, box structures that are required for the construction. In phase two, there are none. The, the city of Volga considered this request last night at their council meeting. Discussion was had amongst the county and city and Banner Group in regards to conditions in which both would have to comply with in order for there to be consideration. uh, in order for there to be consideration of adjusting the phase, the phases on the project. Um, of those conditions, one being that they would need a plan for, uh, managing the stormwater that would collect at the interface of phase one and phase two, um, because the downstream infrastructure would not be in place at the time of the construction of phase two. Um, secondarily, they would need to, uh, provide notification to each doorstep along the project and any residents impacted, uh, indicating their intent to begin with phase two. Um, how they would manage their, uh, their sanitation services, um, how they would manage the mail delivery, and then how they would manage access to those properties. And then lastly, um, that they would maintain access through Sixth Street, which is really the only street that allows access for residents west of Samara, back into the town of Volga, um, at, at, at all times that there is not necessary construction within that intersection. Um, and, and of course, if they intend to close that intersection, then they would need to provide advance notice, um, to the city, county, and residents that live west of there. Um, so, the, 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 I guess, th- the ask is for the commission, I don't believe it's an action item, but just more of a discussion item of, um, your, your considerations for allowing Bose to begin the project, um, in phase two rather than phase one, as it was, uh, as it was bid.
What did the Volga, what did they determine last night at the meeting? What was their recommendation?
Yeah, so, uh-
I got a letter here from, from Michael Schulte, the, uh, uh, city administrator, and our council approved a motion to allow Bose to begin with phase two contingent on that they ensure that there are stormwater mitigation, access through Sixth Street intersection, door hangers to notify the entire corridor before the commencement of the project. However, we will be in agreement with what the county decides. We ultimately want what we can, what, what can get this project to keep moving, uh, in the timeline, complete all three phases this fall. If Bose can do cast and place and keep the timeline, we are fine with sticking with phase one. I know phase one is not located right now, and phase two is. So I assume there will be delays if we desire to keep phase one to get the entire area located.
Uh, I need to stop right here. Uh, we have a public hearing here scheduled at nine o'clock, so I'll have to take care of this first before we get into discussion.
Uh, Waylon does need to, to go to another commission meeting.
Okay, I think you shared your information, what-
Uh, yeah, I think-
What's, one quick question, Waylon, what's the timeframe on phase two to complete that?
Um, phase two, I believe, is about a thirty-five day construction period. Phase one is, uh, closer to a sixty-day construction period.
If they did do phase two, that would fall right into getting the box culverts they need to start for phase one?
Um, yes, it would, it would allow them to, to essentially work through without delay.
Thank you for that information.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Go on to our, uh, scheduled, um, agenda item, nine o'clock, a public hearing. An action to approve a special event license for J Street Pub for an event on August second, twenty twenty-five, at Owlwood Lakes Lodge, four six zero seven five, Twentieth Street, through South Dakota. A motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second. A motion second. Now open the public hearing. Um, any proponents that would like to talk to this?
Good morning, Andrea Dietrich, um, owner of the J Street Pub. Um, so we're doing a wedding out at the Owl Lodge, um, on the second of August, excuse me, I almost said October, um, for, uh, a couple that's getting married, obviously, um, we've done it out there before, so. Just following the event guidelines and, uh, their timeline, so. They usually shut it down about eleven, so, any other questions?
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing none, unclose the public hearing. Entertain comments from the commission?
One question, Sheriff, do you have any issues with this? Okay, one small, small note, the address should be two hundred and fourth, and not twentieth, two oh four, I believe.
Okay, any further discussion? Call or roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is public hearing, an action to approve a special event license for J Street Pub for an event, August second, twenty twenty-five, at Bennett Barn, four seven four three nine, two hundred and fourteenth Street, Aurora, South Dakota. Do I have a motion to approve?
Do approve.
Tag it.
And open this, again, a motion of second. I now open the public hearing. Uh, any proponents that would like to speak?
Uh, yeah, so we have a second wedding. Um, we'll be adding a few employees to help us, uh, cover these, um, events, um, but both of them are on the second, so, uh, the second one is at the Bennett Barn.
Okay.
Busy day.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You got a busy day that day.
Yeah, it's gonna be a busy day.
Any other proponents? Hearing none, any opponents? Any opponents? Then unclose the public hearing. Any comments from the board? Any initial comments? Hearing none, call or roll, please.
Just one comment to make, um, so, if, if this, uh, this second license, um, is approved, J Street Pub then would have two special events licenses left to use for the year, so just wanted to let you, let you know that.
And they're allowed how many?
Six.
Six.
Okay, any other comments? Call or roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, back to Brian's report.
Alright, um, like I has, uh, read the letter from the Michael Schulte, the city administrator from Volga, I think what we're looking for is, is, uh, consensus from the commission to move forward with this project. I guess, ultimately, I'm fine with it. Uh, the city knows their citizens and will have to deal with them directly while this project takes place. I guess, uh, with Banner overseeing Bose on this project, um, in an effort to keep the project moving forward, uh, with the tight timelines, I think that ultimately, I think we need to, to let them move forward to, 'cause October's approaching rather quickly.
Was there correspondence with the pipe company that they would be delivering, or?
There was a, a letter from, uh, SEMCAST, and I don't know if you guys got, with, uh, with the, uh, committee we had got that letter, too, but it sounded like they were, you know, thirty to forty days out.
If, uh, if it pushes out farther, would it possibly start phase three after phase two to keep it going, or?
That, that I can't answer, I think at that point in time, that they would move to, you know, do the cast and place boxes. It would, it was what I would assume. But there again, then, that just takes longer cure times for those structures to, to be built around.
I think it's probably a good idea to get it, get it moving and-
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yep, I would agree with that. I think that's a good plan to jump ahead.
Agreed, I think Bose did, or, excuse me, Banner did a nice job of laying it out for Bose, you know, what needs to get done here, you know, with the post office stuff, getting it to every citizen's got something on their door to update the reasons for the changes. I, I think this is, you know, needs to happen. Appreciate all the hard work you've done on that. The one question I do have is, you know, is there gonna be a contractor meeting coming up? I, I think that, we talked about it's gonna be a weekly thing, and I think that's important.
I know, and we had the pre-con, Kelly, uh, I know you were listening over the computer, but that was discussed to have a weekly, uh, update meeting.
So, do we have one scheduled for this week?
Currently, there is not.
Okay, can I ask, is that a Banner thing to initiate that, or is that a Brian thing?
That's a consultant, uh, thing, and I will push Banner to get those scheduled in an effort to both update the city and, and, uh, the county.
I just think communication is so important with a, a project like this, that, that-
Right.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I would agree with that. You, you can't have too much communication in a situation like this, 'cause it's disrupting people's lives, so.
Right.
So, we have a general consensus to move forward to sign the-
I will sign the notice to proceed tomorrow, and that road will be closed down on Thursday, then.
Okay.
I know the citizens out there have been questioning my, my office about where, why all the detour signs are staged, they are not set up, but they are staged. Uh, they were planning on starting Monday, but they needed board consensus from both boards.
Okay.
So, moving on, our other projects, I will start with the City of White Water and Sewer Project. Uh, last week, paving was completed at Fifth and Hooker and Main and Hooker. Uh, yesterday, I visited the City of White again, and the sidewalk was being installed, uh, at both those intersections. Uh, following that, pending any weather, I'm hoping they can get that backfilled. I know that we're looking down the barrel of a couple of days of rain here, so, uh, there may be some delays on that, but once those two intersections are completed, uh, and signs are reinstalled, we will be opening those intersections back up, and Highway twenty-five through White will be open again.
When is, uh, paving overlay project, do you think?
I, originally, uh, they were thinking last week, um, now, uh, the contractor has decided that they're going to move and pave Highway fifteen first. Um, they're figuring that's gonna take roughly about a month, so I was hoping that was not gonna happen, because that puts us right at the beginning of school. Uh, their estimation of timeline to complete our project is roughly four days. Uh, so it shouldn't have much effect. Um, I've been communicate, in communications with the, uh, bus drivers already. Uh, Dawn Timmons up there with Dubrook, and discussing her, with her on that, and I would like them to attend the pre-con meetings, so we can help avoid any delays or any, uh, issues with getting the kids to and from school when that project starts. Alright, uh, moving on to our structures that we are, uh, have under construction. Um, zero eight F three, south of Aurora. Uh, last week, the water was mitigated from the box culvert, and, uh, the backfill was completed. Um, yesterday morning, we began hauling gravel. As per the contract, the county would provide the gravel on that project, and the contractor's laying it out. Uh, following that, there will need to be some, uh, seeding done, and with seasonal limitations, they can't do that until August. But the erosion control measures will be, uh, set up, and seeding will take place, uh, once the seasonal li- limitations are pulled. Uh, so hopefully, we have a structure open within the next week, um, south of Aurora. Zero eight F four on four eighty-second, just south of fourteen, mile and a half. Visited the site last week, false work was still being removed. Uh, riprap, uh, was looking towards final install, and bridge and backfill was taking place, and, uh, there's going to be another contractor moving in to complete the dirt work, and then the county's providing the gravel on that also. Uh, then then following that, there'll be guardrail installed, and seeding and erosion control, uh, that one also. So, I guess those are the few projects we've had going on. Uh, we're looking at wrapping up, uh, some pretty major milestones here. I would say mid-construction season, so it looked like it moved along good with those three projects, White and those two structures. Uh, looking forward here, I have not heard from Katz or Concrete. There's going to be a box culvert, uh, erected north of Elkton, uh, that we bid earlier this spring, uh, but I haven't gotten a timeline on that.
Um, there was a couple of questions on the, I'm gonna finalize the budget later today, but, uh, some equipment questions, and I asked Brian to bring some information on the tractor and mower, and, and then, um, semi tractor. If there's any other questions, you can kind of clarify that.
I guess, uh, when I turned in my budget detail report, did each commissioner, uh, have a chance to review, uh, my comments on those equipment requests? Or if you guys recall that, I, I got copies for each of you, uh, on that. Um, covering both the semi and the tractor request. I guess, starting with the, uh, the tractor, um, you know, I, I put this together as a, a quote as a whole. I guess, Stacy, if I could have you- or where do I gotta be for the- Um, kinda following my comments, their, uh, description of use, uh, you know, the county does currently have a boom mower, um. Right now, with the heights of the guardrail and the new, uh, standards that, uh, the feds are placing on these bridges is roughly thirty-one inches, and the current mower we have sits so low to the ground, we can't reach over the guardrail, uh, with our current setup, um, on a lot of our bridges, which are a lot of the interstate bridges and, uh, any of the new bridges that have been completed within the last twelve to fifteen years. And those are our major, uh, river bridges, and a lot of what we do with the boom is, is gets our intersections, uh, especially on the south part of Brookings, where we, we look at a lot of cattails. Uh, when we do that, we're doing it two to three times a year. The third time would be the final cleanup. Uh, but each time we do that, we need to dismount, uh, the rear end side mowers, which takes roughly about four hours. Uh, but those mowers are awfully handy to go around to those, uh, areas in between, uh, which it's hard for one tractor getting, to get over everything. I guess, the major part of my proposal here would be a tractor that would be able to, uh, be equipped with this boom mower year-round. Um, and then also be able to be equipped with, as you can see in my budget request here, would be an eight-foot side mower, uh, at roughly twenty thousand dollars. And talking with a lot of the landowners, you know, they request that the county, you know, leave areas so they can hay those areas. Uh, but a lot of the times, we leave those areas, and then they're never cut. And I feel with, this would be working with the landowners out there. We'd still be able to knock down the hay. Uh, right now, when we go by with our, our rotary mowers, it, it chews the hay up to where it's not to be able, excuse me, not to be able to be processed into a bale. It is, it destroys it. Um, we're talking with other counties, a lot of them have moved towards this, uh, you know, disc mower setup in an effort to leave that hay so it's be able to process by the, by the adjacent landowners, or whoever would hay it. You know, uh, that's one of the big parts of this request, is the, the ability to do that. Uh, you know, in a year like this year, we're, we're moving about two and a half, three miles an hour to do a good job cutting those roadside edges. to do a good job cutting those roadside edges. Uh, you know, even moving at five, six miles an hour, one mower could be out there, uh, with this and still be able to knock down that right next to the road, uh, moving a little quicker where, you know, if we're, if we're having to, you know, mobilize two to three times a year throughout the whole county, we're looking at roughly four hundred miles times two because of both sides of the road. We're about thirty-two-hundred miles per year we're putting on these tractors. And that's, that's a lot of ground to cover in, in two to three miles an hour. And I just feel that the pro, or the service that we provide with, with keeping those grass edges down makes it a lot easier to maintain our, our gravel roads, makes it a lot easier to, uh, allow the snow to move over the road, uh, during the winter, uh, especially in the case of this request would be the cattails in the, in the intersections and the, in the site visibility, uh, for the safety of our residents. I, I feel that it's imperative, especially south of town, that we, we gotta be able to reach out there. And we can currently right now, but it's, it's not as far as we would like.
Yeah.
I guess, is there any questions on that part of the equipment request? Like I said, as provided in, on the quote there.
I'll try get in on that. If I can hold my voice together. The current tractor and mower that you've got, what kind of mower is that, that it pulverizes so much more?
It's, it's a, it's a rotary.
More like a hammer?
Yeah, well, it's, it's rotary. It just basically chews the grass, grass up like a lawnmower.
Oh. But you're not planning on surplusing those?
No.
Or?
No. I mean, tho- those are, the one's a little older, uh, but they're fairly late model and, and in decent shape. Uh, I guess to cover what I would like to surplus, that is later in my report in the second page on those budget requests, is there are four pieces of equipment that I would like to surplus.
So you, Brian, you have the equipment that you're, this boom mower that you're doing now, you're adding another one?
Mm-hmm.
What you've got now is doing the job, but you wanna add a second one?
It's not doing the job to the extent that we would like. It, it doesn't, you know, the, the request here, you know, I, I got it written down. Uh, we're, we can reach out about twelve feet currently. With this request, uh, if you look at the diamond mower, uh, on the second part of that quote, uh, we'd be able to reach out roughly twenty-three feet.
Which helps with?
Getting out there, you know, because a lot of these areas, we can't get down in the ditch because it's so wet. You know, we gotta be on the edge of the road, so, uh, without being a danger to one, the operator and, and two, uh, keeping that tractor on the road to be able to reach out that far.
And also this can reach over the guardrails and the?
Correct. And then, this is a, a piece of equipment too that can be added on to. So say we, we move forward with this and we have the, the side mower, we take that, uh, part of the boom off that would do the, that mowing, when that would be used, you can equip this with say a flail to handle brush, uh, you know, a lot of the hard areas we can't reach also with, with manpower to get the, a lot of that brush cut down because in the past, we've, we've cleared a lot of brush since the durischo, but there's a lot more that's growing back. You know, so say down the road, we wanna put a flail on this, we could add that without much cost.
That, that extra eleven feet of, of knockdown or cut down, y- y- you know, if that deer's coming out of the, out of the ditch, you're able to see it eleven feet quicker, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And it's helping knock down, uh, for snow removal. And, and your county guys know where those troublesome spots are at. You know, I've heard some chatter about, oh, can we give a contractor to do this? And I, I think a contractor on a job like this, you know, it's not gonna get done on time. The contractor's not gonna know the spots that really need to get hit, like your guys know where they need to get, uh, taken care of.
And we were really lucky, uh, and I hate to say it because we were so dry, but if, if you guys recall, south of town, uh, Thirty-second Avenue, the county went through there with, uh, a piece of machinery that the city parks owns and we were able to knock down that, that, uh, brush, you know, but it was so incredible dry, we could get out there with our skid loader. Uh, we went from dry this spring to the skid loader wouldn't be able to access that now without being stuck all the time. You know, and that, that's the luck we had the last few years, but I'm afraid that's run out.
And this new mower is, uh, I just read in your, in your description of use, the, uh, it's gonna be lower center gravity, the stability's gonna be better on it, because I think you, in here you say, uh, the unit you use currently is high center gravity, tippy, you know, so the.
The, the tractor, the tractor's too light.
Yeah.
And we're relying on ballast that's, that's in the outside tire, but I've seen that mower to where the, the outside tire, when that boom is fully extended, be able, it's coming off the ground.
So, safety concerns plus for county employees and everything, and then in turn, traffic in that for safety concerns with animals and deer and.
Right.
The, whatever it might be. So, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of factors to in, in.
Right.
Consider.
And then one of the things that you guys can see in the, uh, budget detail request, you know, we do, uh, co-op and trade some equipment with the City of Brookings and that has allowed us in the past to be able to get out there with a piece of equipment they have with their skid loader. Uh, they have a skid loader attachment that is a drumhead that, uh, it's a, it's basically a brush, brush eater. It chews it up to the point to where you can leave that stuff lay, but in turn, we've, uh, co-opted with them with our current boom mower to go along their trails, uh, to go along any of the areas in the city that have problems with site visibility, uh, primarily south of town. I, I keep referring to that, but we do work with them, uh, in an effort to, to utilize their equipment they have also.
Sit right back. I'll go ahead.
Well, if you, we're adding, you wanna add a second brush mower there, how much will the current one be used then? Do we need to?
In the time, you know, th- that's what I had discussed with the, uh, salesman that came and talked to me. I said, well, you know, what's a, what's a trade-in value for this? You know, with, without having, uh, the ability to have every mount from that tractor, you know, that's, he said we'd be better off keeping it as a backup rather than trying to trade it in. But that is something, you know, I could reach out to another county. Maybe there, there's a county out there that, that is needing something.
Well, you get a new piece of equipment and, and I get the, that'll do a better job, but then does it make sense to leave the old one just set there?
I, I more than agree, but I, I would hate to see the, us get rid of it for pennies on the dollar when it could still be used in the future if, if say one is down.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, and that's, that's another thing, the requests with the surplus, uh, you know, I'm, I'm trying to liquidate, uh, items we don't use. Uh, one is that roller, you know, since we've quit doing our chip seal, uh, we have not put very many hours on the roller, you know, and that's, that's something I'm trying to do is, is keep the equipment that isn't being utilized. Is this working? That isn't being utilized, uh, you know, to move it down the road.
What, what is that tractor, the one that's currently on the boom?
It's a sixty-one forty-five and this would be a, uh, this would be, no, six-one forty-five is what we're requesting. I believe that's, it's a, it's, it's a larger frame tractor, but with roughly arou- right around the same horsepower where the one we have now is, is a smaller frame tractor. Uh.
Yeah, what number is, what is it?
I, I can't remember off the top of my head.
And the other question that I had, is there other ways to control those cattails in the ditch?
I would refer that to our weed department. I know in the, the last few years, we've had very good success, uh, with Misty out spraying those road edges, but with the water continually standing, I'm, they're coming back.
Hello. Um, yes, we are actually gonna be starting on spraying the cattails the end of the week into next week. We'll use aquatic Roundup, understanding that there is water there, but as long as they're actively growing and we cover all the leaves, the majority of the leaves on the cattail, it'll not come back for a good two years and then they come back. My guys are actually writing notes down on what county roads and where we need to spray cattails at.
But even after spraying them, they're still standing?
Then, then remember, Oddo, you weren't here, I don't believe. Uh, they got a mulcher. You were talking on a skid steer, but it's so wet, like then the mower would come in handy, but then we'd, we need to still knock them down, because they reproduce by rhizomes.
How early can we s- I mean, could we just spray them earlier in the season before they get too terrible tall?
We need to spray them now, starting now. They're starting to form their seed pod on the top, the brown, what we call a hot dog. Um, that's the seeds. So, we need to start now. Spraying earlier might work. Um, they say it's better control towards the end of its life.
I just, if we can keep them from getting that tall in the first place, you know, this, even this time of year, you'd think they'd, if they were dead, they would decompose and fall down by winter, but.
But they don't. And then they just create more. There's gonna be weeds, but we'll have to go back behind either later this fall or next year and spray the weeds there.
Yeah.
Hoping it's dry.
We know they need to be controlled one way or the other, so.
Yes. So that, that's how we did it, what, two years ago?
Right.
Last year. We just, the tractor molded them down and we, we moved on. I think it helped.
I think it helped too, but, uh, there again, I feel reaching out a little farther would definitely benefit us.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, Brian. It's just, my, my question is, do we need two? This is a John Deere mower?
It'd be a John Deere tractor equipped with a diamond mower.
You're dealing with what company on this?
This would be RDO, uh, governmental purchases, and then the diamond mowers have been dealing with Diamond Mower in Sioux Falls.
So the salesman didn't wanna take the other one in on trade? Are there other companies you can deal with?
I mean, I guess I haven't looked into it, but Diamond Mowers is, Diamond Mowers, I guess.
I, I, I get that. It's just trying to be responsible with taxpayer money here.
I agree.
Why do we have two pieces of equipment if one's just gonna sit there?
I agree.
How much was the cost of the boom mower when we purchased it?
I don't recall. That was purchased before my time, but I can look into it, Larry.
Okay. It might be worth, might be worth half of what we paid for.
Could be.
Maybe. Yeah. All right. Any additional questions?
I guess if, uh, we'd like to talk about the truck. I know that mower was a, a big expense request asked and, and secondly here with the, the semi request, uh, I guess to update you guys as commissioners, I know you approved it earlier this year, uh, but we requested, uh, uh, plow truck. That could be a, a semi, that can be a, uh, a dump truck or anything we really, really need it for. Uh, we'd been on the list, uh, with two or three companies for roughly about three to four years. Uh, so we've deferred that purchase for roughly about three to four years. And then as you can see here in my, my surplus, I'm also surplusing a semi. Uh, that's, that's at its use of, or that's at the point of its, uh, useful life. It's, it's provided a service, but, uh, there again, it's, it's nickel and diming us, uh, to the point to where I feel that we need to move forward, uh, with something, whether it be new or used and talking with, uh, a couple of the salesmen from a couple of different companies, you know, what we're after is a, a utility truck. Uh, we're looking at something that can, you know, go down the road and, but it also be used on a construction site. And I guess I'm not saying we need to go brand new, but talking with the salesman with our governmental pricing, we're, we're almost, uh, to the point to where something used is just about worth something brand new that a, that a county government can buy. You know, a couple of the options that we're putting for, in front of me yesterday, you're looking at between one-seventy to, to one-eighty for a, uh, used truck with, you know, fairly late model, whereas if you guys recall, when we purchased the truck earlier this year, bare bones, nothing on it, was about one-forty-four. So I guess, taking that into consideration, uh, you know, by the time that you would li- consider the one-forty-four, but adding on what you guys are gonna be looking at later, you know, uh, with our actual full-fledged plow truck, uh, you know, adding on a wet kit, anywhere between twenty-five to thirty thousand and a headache rack and a fifth-wheel plate, we're right in the money of that, of that something used. So I guess that's why I'm, I'm bringing that forward to you guys later in this meeting. Uh, further discussion can happen on that truck at that point in time. Uh, I think, I would like to have you guys take a look at the proposal that would be needing to equip the truck that we just purchased and we can shirttail this request into that if you guys are good with that.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Say, Brian, real quick, is the idea to get this ordered? Because it takes three years to get one in, or?
The idea, Doug, at this point in time is to get our name on the list and I don't wanna put our name on the list without commission concurrence, because once our name would get put on the list, I don't want a surprise bill to be coming in front of you guys. Fair enough?
Brian, I got one more question. Your, your, the north end of our county's getting a lot of extra traffic with Highway twenty-eight being closed. If you've told me I've forgotten, when is Highway twenty-eight anticipated to be open again?
I believe it's, it's got a November first timeline, but that road is not going to be paved.
Kinda like the Highway fifteen project that took place?
Correct.
Okay.
It's going to be a blotter surface over the winter and to be paved the following year. Uh, I would like to point out, I know Marty brought it up, if there are landowners that, uh, request that we assist with helping them with the landowner-provided dust control, we, we are working with the citizens up there to prepare those roads. If they wanna put dust control down, the county will help get those roadways repaired so they can put the dust control down to, in order to, for. So they can put the dust control down to in order to for them to to get the life out of the dust control, they're hoping. I just wanted to point that out. We are working with the landowner. Uh, this week, he's gonna be putting dust control down and we helped provide the, you know, the good road to put it on.
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, finance officer report, uh, be it noted items. Um, orders account with the treasurer, payroll and additive totals, highway expenditure report, register of deed statement of fees collected. Moving on to uh regular business. Item A is action to approve resolution number twenty-five dash forty, a plat of Waldner addition in the northeast quarter. Of the northeast quarter of section twenty-five, township one-ten north, range fifty-two west of the fifth primary in Brookings County, South Dakota. Have motion approve.
Motion approve.
Second.
We have motion second. Any comments?
Yes, this plat was approved at our uh month, regular monthly meeting. It is for five acres with just a building on there that could be used for farm. Or agricultural storage. It cannot be built for a house because it does not have thirty-five acres and there was not a house there previously in the past. So our residence could not be built there. Just want that noted in the county minutes and we also note that in our zoning minutes. When these smaller lots and acreage comes up, that is not a buildable site for residents in the future.
What, Richard, what's the motivation for rezoning this?
They're not rezoning it, they're plating it.
Plating it.
They sold it.
Oh, gotcha.
It was a fifteen acre acreage. They sold the five acres with the outbuilding, the accessory building.
Got it.
And the rest of the building, site and land is going with the residents.
I misunderstood that. Thank you.
Good. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action approve resolution number twenty-five dash forty-one. A twenty-twenty-six bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of applications. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
And motion second. Comments?
All right. I know this is a first for a couple of you guys, so I'm going to kind of give you the rundown.
Thank you.
Okay, so as we look at this application, this is going to be the first part of receiving a bridge grant. So this would be the preliminary engineering uh grant with the DOT through the big grant program. This would basically give the type, size and location of the structure that we hope to replace. This structure is on County Road seventy-seven to south of County Road thirty-eight. This would be at a twenty percent cost uh to the county to get this uh phase started. This roughly takes about a year, year and a half to complete. Once we get that uh completed, then we're eligible to move forward with the request for replacement. Once the request for replacement's put in and approved by the DOT, you're looking at about a three to four year window. In between that request and when that project would take place. So all untold, you're looking at about five to six years before. By the time the first PE request would be coming in to the time that we'd begin, hopefully get approved to replace a structure like this.
And if my, this is an application, so you're not guaranteed.
Not guaranteed. Those need to be in by August first. These would be approved at a later date by the DOT commission. And then, like Larry said, there's no guarantee, but this would get the process started.
Okay.
And on a type, size and location PE like this, we're looking at. A cost of total would be roughly about thirty to forty thousand dollars. It depends on the size of the structure. And we'd be responsible for twenty percent of that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approve agreement number twenty-five dash fifty-eight, a bill of sale for the former Brookings Area Transit Authority building. Uh, sixty-two foot by a hundred and fourteen foot lease site building located on Lot A of County Highway, first addition. To the municipality of Brookings, Brookings County, South Dakota. Have motion approve.
So moved.
Second.
And motion second. Any comments?
This bill of sale will be filed with the register of deeds. That makes that purchase then of that building. You know, official, then it's on the record that it now belongs to the county. Um, I do have the signed bill of sale from Mr. Bortonum in my possession.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action approve agreement number twenty-five dash fifty-nine, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Valley Fiber Comm in Wokewood Township. Have motion approve.
So moved.
Second.
And motion second. Any comments?
It's be a crossing on our County Road eight, north of Volga. Just an extension of Valley Fiber Comm.
Okay. Hearing no other comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item E, action move forward with the purchase of budgeted equipment for the highway department. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Comments?
Okay, um, bringing this forward to you guys, uh, last year, June, I know a couple of you guys were not sitting on the board, but we were approved. Uh, to purchase two vehicles. Uh, in the highway department, last year, we did surplus one uh right-of-way. Uh, this would be uh for replacement of the vehicles that we had surplus in the last couple of years. So this would be purchased uh in town. Comparing this to the uh state bid, we're. We're within two to three thousand dollars and that would be purchased out of town, but it's still within the uh budget. Uh, not, I'm sorry, not budget, but the constraints of the fifty thousand dollar uh bid limit. So we would not need to bid this. We just need concurrence from the board uh to move forward with this.
Okay. Just, is this just the one piece?
Just one. I I've got a f- uh second request.
Okay.
Uh, but I'll do that at a later meeting. I'm working out some details that might have a a little different uh configuration.
All right. Any questions, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item.
Oh, sorry.
Item F, action authorize chairperson Johnson to sign. A federal funding accountability and transparency act certification as part of the community, community development block grant reporting. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Any comments?
This is documentation needed for the CBBG grant. This is, of course, what the Brookings Behavioral Health Construction Project. That the the county has been acting as the conduit for, just some needed documentation.
Okay. And further comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item G, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a full-time female correctional officer in the detention center. Do I have motion approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Have motion second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item H, action approve a request to fill vacancy for a full-time female correctional officer in the detention center. Do I have motion approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item I is action to unassign two-hundred thousand from the assigned fund balance for the Beta Bus Garage. Three-oh-one dash two dash two-seven-six dash nine-four-zero-zero. And twenty thousand for the nineteen-twenty-one parking lot. Two-zero-one dash two dash two-seven-six dash nine-five-zero-zero. In the three-oh-one county building fund. Do I have motion approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have motion second. Any comments?
So these um dollars have been assigned within that three-oh-one, that county building fund for those specific uh purchases, the Beta Building and then. Doing the chip seal of the nineteen-twenty-one parking lot. Last meeting, the board approved a budget supplement um for the Beta Building, so that's just unassigning those dollars now. And then we have enough budget. The chip seal came in quite um under budget, so we have enough budget here in twenty-twenty-five to cover that, so. Just asking for those to be unassigned so we can kind of clean up some of. Some things in our, in our, in our ledger.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, commission department director report.
The veteran service officer uh report and those numbers are there on my report. Six rides with the veteran transport system and no DAV rides. Here in this last month for for June. They attended three outreach events, uh, one conference, and then that monthly total of claims coming back to veterans here. Um, in Brookings County was just over sixty-one thousand dollars for June, so nice to see that. Um, the general fund surplus for June was at forty-one percent. That is above the ten-year average of thirty-seven percent. Um, we just kind of keep watching that here throughout the year. Uh, so we know kind of where we're at at year end and 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 watch for assignments. Here we are halfway through the year already. Uh, tomorrow, I have had a request from um. Uh, an A- Abby Child, she's with Brigham Young University. They're doing a twenty-twenty-five survey. Selected of selected counties and municipalities here in the Midwest. They're visiting with local officials from ten different counties in South Dakota. Trying to understand the most important political and social issues in the region. And then what makes uh the most effective communities in the Midwest work well. So she would like to meet with. Myself and one or two commissioners tomorrow, either between nine and ten or after one o'clock. Are there a couple of you that would be available?
I guess nine, ten would work.
Okay. Anybody else available?
I could make that also.
I'll just stay in touch with the both of you then, once I get back in touch with her on that. Wanting to know for you to look at your calendars for October twenty-first, I know that's a little ways out, but October twenty-first is a commission meeting date. Um, I want to schedule department head evaluations for that afternoon, so we'd meet in the morning and then department head evaluations. Would be basically be from one o'clock to five o'clock that afternoon. Does that work for your calendars? And if so. Schedule that, get that scheduled.
October what day?
Twenty-first.
That does not work for me.
Okay. Um.
I'm I'm gone that whole week, but.
Brian, are you gone then that day anyway? Yeah, Brian. I, road convention or something I wrote down?
October twenty-first?
Yeah, that's the uh local roads conference in Sioux Falls.
Okay. How about November fourth?
That's election, or is there election day?
There is no election this year.
There's no, I don't know why I have that on there.
And they always put election day as the first Tuesday in November, but we don't have an election this year.
No. Good for me. That works for me.
Not sure.
You're not sure. If I, if you put it on your calendar, then you would be absolutely sure that you could attend. Otherwise, we can do, I don't like going too much later because there's, once that's done, then there's uh some paperwork that needs to happen. Um, we could look at a non-commission meeting date as well, if something like a morning would work better.
Twenty-first, twenty-eighth?
What's that? The twenty-eighth of October?
Tuesday?
It would be a Tuesday. Would that work better in like in the morning, to get it done in the mornings then, on the twenty-eighth?
Yep.
Fine with me.
Yep.
That works.
Okay. And then, um, yesterday, Commissioner Hostler and I met with some, some representatives from the city. We're having issues with the HVAC system here at the government center. It's kind of always been an issue, honestly, since we moved into this building. The system was just very unique and. It hasn't been probably working the way it should have been uh practically since the day the doors opened, but. We were given like three different options that we were looking at. The cheapest option is basically a Band-Aid fix uh that no one was real interested in. It's about a sixty thousand dollar cost estimate. The, I'm gonna skip over, option two is actually the option that we're kind of looking at. That's. Full replacement of the chillers and Commissioner Hostler, jump in here if if you have anything to add, but. That's, right now, that estimate is nine-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars, uh, plus or minus five percent. Option three um would be to, it's a five-hundred thousand, it would replace chillers only. Where the other one would replace the whole existing cooling system. And then chillers only, that's even about five-hundred thousand dollars. What the group yesterday discussed is that we're very interested in in option two. But, you know, there may be some costs, some engineering costs and things here in twenty-twenty-five, but really looking at budgeting for that then in twenty-twenty-six. It appears that we'll have some extra dollars in the general fund for twenty-twenty-six. That, you know, that I kind of looked at possibly setting aside then or budgeting for this project. Because it was with this building, we're responsib- we're responsible for fifty-two percent of those costs. That, you know, if you, if you increase that nine-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, add the five percent on, our our fifty-two percent is about five-hundred thousand dollars. So, um, I guess I'm just kind of looking at some directions, some thoughts. The the joint powers board is going to meet on this. Um, we're waiting, waiting for the city's uh facilities manager to get some additional information and then the joint powers board is gonna meet. To discuss this and bring an official recommendation, but with budgets being due here, preferably today. Um, I wanted to kind of put that on your radar as as uh something to look at for twenty-twenty-six. Like I said, there will probably be some upfront costs if we decide to go that direction, some some costs here in twenty-twenty-five to kind of prepare us. So that we can start getting that ready right away in twenty-twenty-six. It's nice to do an air conditioning project.
One of the things, and and correct me if I'm wrong, I learned in that, in that meeting, that the system for this building was kind of a, hey, let's try this out. And it's not really ever been a system used in our area. Um, it's uh used with water cooling and the heat, it's not just a, the cooling system, it's the heating, cooling. It also was never designed for the IT cabinets and the IT closets that we have, the rooms. Um, which in my tenure on the, on the commission, we've always had a big issue with uh the cooling and of course, that. Equipment in there is very expensive uh that needs to be cooled and that. that I, when I heard it, heard the price, yeah, it's a, it's a tough one, but the other two, the other two options they gave were Band-Aids fixing the original system with no guarantees, and that system is three-quarters into its life expectancy now. So yeah, it, the system was originally designed and, and not, it was kind of a, hey, let's try this because this is a new fangled deal and it hasn't worked since the doors opened. And.
Was there any discussion on humidity in the building?
I mean, that's part of all of this.
Yeah.
I mean, that we're hoping that this would, would take care of the humidity issues that we experience in the building.
Because a lot of the laminate woodworking is let loose because it's so dry and
Yep.
or wet, whatever, causing it, and that's been a concern for a long time.
Yeah.
I know, we, we moved into this building in 2012. I started that, my position, my current position in 2014, and we did actually have, we hired an outside consultant to come in in 2014 and look at the system, two years into being in this building, and kind of brought the players to the table and, and I don't think anything was really resolved because nobody would take responsibility or accountability for, you know, what the issues were. They, they all think what they did was, was right. So we've been dealing with this almost, you know, immediately from the time we moved into this building, so yes, you know, if you look at a typical system, I think it's expected, you know, its life expectancy would expire in like 2032, but we're looking at moving that up because, just because of where we're at now and things are. If you recall, several summers ago, we had one of, we had to bring in a temporary chilling unit because we had stuff go out, so
Yeah, there's
we've kind of been dealing with this for a while.
Yeah, there's six, six chillers on the roof, and I think they said three of them are not functioning right now. So it's running at half and, yeah.
So other than that, I just have some upcoming dates. Tomorrow is the South Dakota Board of Regents reception, 5:30 to 7:30 at McCrory Gardens. For those of you that said you plan to attend, I did RSVP for you. On the 21st is RSO appreciation night out at the BCOAC from 6:00 to 8:00. I know I've RSVP'd for a couple of you. If you haven't, if you didn't tell me to and you haven't yet, maybe reach out to Joe or Lisa out there and let them know if you pla, if you plan to attend. We're coming up here in a couple of weeks with 4H Achievement Days out at the Dakota Bank Center, and that barbecue, of course, is on the 31st of July. I think Sonia Mack, our 4H Youth Advisor, will be sending out your marching orders on, if you can help that night on what to do at that, that barbecue. She sends that out here, I'm guessing shortly. August 7th is the CDI Golf Outing. Is there interest in, I haven't seen anything yet to put together a team, but I can definitely reach out. Is there interest from people in golfing in that? Putting a county team together? Kelly, not a golfer.
I'm actually out of town that week, so unfortunately.
Doug, are you a golfer? No. Dave, no, okay. All right. And then the next Sioux Valley Commissioners Association 10-county meeting is August 13th, that's a Wednesday, it'll be in Clark County. I'm guessing it'll be somewhere in Clark, I don't have that information just yet. I would anticipate that we'd get that here shortly. And then coming up in just over a month, the Conservation District Tour. If you don't have that on your calendar, please get that on your calendar. That's a, that's a great, that's a great tour that they put on, on August 21st. Other than that, that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Stacy, am I on the list for the OAC RSO?
Yes, I believe I did RSVP.
Thank you.
I think you had asked me to, and I think I did, so.
Yeah, I'd like to be to that.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
I just have one que, if we could step back to regular business, I just have one quick question. On item E, with Brian, there were two items that you brought, the Brookings Auto Mall and which we approved, the sanitation products one, that one was coming back at another time, is that correct?
That's what I was wondering. Going to talk about it. But I guess we skipped over it. As you guys maybe remember, earlier this year, we, we purchased a, a truck or concurred to purchase a truck that has bare bones, nothing on it. This would be able to equip that truck with a plow, wing, sander. We decided to go with the body on this in an effort to place the sander within the body. Previously, we, we equipped the one to be able to not be placed in the body and we experienced a lot of rust issues. So we decided to go with the body and place the sander within the dump body of that truck. All in total, 144 for the truck and 198, 509 for the hydraulics and the equipment. And I had budgeted right around $400,000 for that unit last year, so we'd be right around $50,000 less than what I had budgeted.
And this is the one you can actually get?
It's the one we have on order. We haven't got it yet.
Okay.
And like I said, I had budgeted roughly $400,000 and we're going to be right around 50-ish less than what I had budgeted.
Okay. And this is coming out of last year's budget?
Correct.
So just clarity, that was approved also.
Yeah. So do you need? I, if we're good with the concurrence that you guys gave for the one, I'm good with that. I'm glad you brought it up, Dave, so we could make sure that everybody was aware that if we're going to move forward with this, now would be the time. There's going to be some lead times on some of this stuff, and I'm hoping that we get this before the first of the year so we can get it paid for.
Okay.
Yeah, good. We get the truck and hopefully everything? Hopefully, we get the truck by October. We're in the queue with sanitation products to be able to assemble that. Pending any delays with this, it doesn't sound like there's going to be as much delay as there is with this equipment as there going to be the truck. So scheduled to get the truck October, September, October timeframe. I would expect, I, I wouldn't expect the truck to be here before the first of the year, but if we have this equipment, we might have a smaller, you know, assembly type of fee after the first of the year, but we could at least get this type of equipment paid for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good information. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Move on to item number 10, State's Attorney's Office Report.
Yeah, just briefly, I appreciate Marty's comments earlier. For those that have missed it, we had a pretty big drug case that was concluded last week. It was the Oscar Maranko case. He received 15 years in the penitentiary, and the reason that was significant because I was told it was the largest prison outcome in all of South Dakota this year. So credit to the staff, law enforcement, putting that one together. There's a few other that are coming down, just continuing to work hard and keeping Brookings County safe, so.
Okay, thank you.
Well done. Thanks.
Commissioner reports in discussion, Commissioner Vander.
Thank you. On the morning of July 8th, last week, Tuesday, attended the CO2 Pipeline Meeting here in the room next door, and then later that evening at 5:30, we had the joint city and county meeting here, and that's my report. Thank you.
Commissioner Post.
And ditto with Commissioner Vander-Wall Street Park.
Commissioner Miller.
Well, on the 7th, we had the executive session here. On 8th, we're at the joint meeting with the city. On the 9th, I attended the White Fire Department Feed. It was fun to see their new building and some of their new equipment, and many of them were very grateful for the county and their help with getting some, the new truck up there. Nice facility. And on the 10th, the BCOAC Safety Picnic.
Okay. Commissioner Hostler.
Yeah, on the 7th, of course, we had the commission meeting here, and then the 8th, we had the joint commission council meeting. The 10th, we had that safety meeting, and then attended a joint city meeting at Cubby's for Commissioner Jensen. I can't remember what date that one was though, because it wasn't on my calendar. What's that? Well, I think last Monday, yep. And then, of course, yesterday, joint city about the HVAC system that we discussed during Stacy's report, and that is my report.
Okay, thank you. On the 7th, also attended executive session. On the 8th, joint meeting with the city on zoning issue. On the 9th, had a pandemic planning meeting and also attended the safety picnic. That concludes my report. Item number 12 on the agenda is executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, parentheses, one, personnel. Do I have motion to enter?
Still moved.
Second.
Have motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.